Recording in progress. Now, where to get that capital budget? The police cars are only replaced, or the police cars are replaced about approximately three times as often as DPW and fire vehicles. Yet, the DPW and fire vehicles are much more specialized than the police vehicles. If one of them breaks, it might be much harder to find another vehicle that would do the job. But when a standard police car breaks, there'd be at least several others probably available. So, I mean, I just, maybe there's a reason that I don't know, but that seems unlikely. I would, uh, I would like to hear an examination of why that vehicle replacement system is in place despite what I said. Thank you.
Thank you, Jessie.
Um, next is just iPhones. So if you could please say your name and where you live before you make your comment. Thank you.
Hi, sorry, this is Julian Hines, um, and I am a resident of District Five. My comment tonight, um, I'd like to examine some of the numbers around the possibility of installing a solar canopy over the parking lot of the high school. I want to first thank Mr. Brockelman for, um, using our funds to install a similar solar canopy or expand the one that is being installed over Fort River. Um, I think that's a great step in the right direction. But, um, when we look at the numbers in the regional school district specifically, um, we find that it would cost about one million dollars to build a solar canopy. Then, accounting for cost escalation and repaving the parking lot, that would bring it up to between 1.4 and 1.6 million dollars. Um, so when we look at that, we see that, um, in FY twenty-four, or in FY twenty-five proposed capital budget, there is a $900,000 radio request system for the police and fire departments. And then in FY twenty-five, there is an additional nine, or in FY twenty-six, there is an additional 900,000 that's planned to be spent on that, both in borrowing, so the town's accruing debt in that regard. Um, and what I would ask is that those funds be transferred to build a solar canopy over the high school. In addition to the obvious environmental benefits, um, of having a solar canopy, I think it is also worth noting that it would save about the amount of money being requested, um, roughly 360, 370,000 dollars in electricity and utility costs for the schools, that rather than taking from another department or increasing taxation within the town budget, um, it would be feasible to use that money in electricity savings to fund some of these staff positions that are proposed to be cut in perpetuity. And then in addition to that, I would add that, um, in addition to the environmental benefits and the cost-saving benefits that could save staff positions with this proposal, it is also worth noting that the, uh, proposal for the police and fire radios was only proposed this year and, um, has not been thoroughly vetted for potentially cheaper options such as those that neighboring towns use. Um, and I would ask that before we look into spending $2 million that could potentially be better spent elsewhere, we ask if in the 21st century, um, most of these, this equipment is, uh, can be done via electronically, via phones, tablets, computers. Um, so I would ask that we look into other, uh, options to, um, update the radio system that do not cost us this amount of money, um, and instead transfer that money towards building a solar canopy on the schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Julian.
Okay, Nina M., please, uh, state your name and where you live before you begin.
My name is Nina Mankin. I live in District One in Amherst, Mass. Um, I am, my main comment is about the request to meet Leverett, Ellam, and Shootsbury at their 6% level. I think that they have, they're asking us to honor their commitment to education by, by meeting them at that level. I'd like to also note that while, um, the town manager, while, while Mr. Brockelman's, um, document showed a 4% increase as a recommendation in the actual budget, many departments are getting much higher increases than 4%. Um, I would, I, I'll talk about that in a second. I would like to say that I believe we must set our superintendent, our new superintendent up for success and that our approach to lowering our budget in the school district is one to slash money, whereas what we need to do is look at a systemic, um, is have a systemic approach to our budget. And the manager Brockelman uses the term fiscal stability for the schools to address increases in costs versus enrollment. And I suggest that approaching that shift by slashing budgets is the wrong approach. I have personally been disheartened by comments I've heard from some town councilors, finance committee members, and the town manager that suggest a tone of disapproval about the way the regional school department has handled its budget. And I find that to be the wrong tone to, um, to address fiscal issues within a large school department, that the notion of using language that, that is the language of austerity, um, to pull back over spending is actually, um, uh, the wrong language to use. It is the language of punishment and punishing our children who are going to these schools. And in fact, our budget problems are in great part the result of state formulas that are stacked against us. A number of Amherst families have been meeting with state officials to understand those formulas and understand how we are being affected by those formulas. And I suggest that a number of our public officials do not seem to understand that picture and are instead using a system of blame. Um, uh, other departments are receiving much higher increases, um, which are about inflation and salary increases. Uh, and these are also the main reasons for increases in the regional school budget. I ask you to please meet the other towns in a 6% um, increase to the school budget. And I'm impressed with the solar suggestions. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Nina.
Okay, Kathleen, you are next. Please state your name and where you live before you begin.
Hi, my name is Kathleen Mitchell. I'm a resident of Amherst with two children in the schools. I want to urge the finance committee to recommend and the town council to approve the inclusion of a 6% increase for the regional schools in the budget. With Pelham, Shootsbury, and Leverett already having approved this amount, I hope Amherst will also step up to support our schools. Many municipal departments in Amherst are already receiving increases well beyond the 6%. Demonstrating that rising personnel costs affecting all sectors make the 4% guideline very difficult. I'm concerned about the reduction in programs and support and increasingly overburdened staff in our schools. And while I understand that a shrinking student population may necessitate some changes, we simply can't accept schools of diminishing overall quality as inevitable. The regional schools' budget is hampered by inequities and inadequacies of state funding, especially the Chapter 70 formula, charter reimbursement formula, transportation aid, and the fact that funding formulas assume that only 16% of students in a school district have disabilities, whereas in the regional schools, that figure is much higher at 26%. Decisions made at a local level, though, also are playing a role. Of the over $1 million a year that the town receives from UMass, the regional schools gets only $15,000. Whereas Fire and EMS receives $700,000 annually. While there may be a reason for this choice, it is nonetheless a choice that has a direct negative impact on the regional schools' budget. Similarly, the decision to allocate a growing share of tax receipts to capital reserves is shrinking the piece of the pie available to split among municipal services. There are a large number of families who have already begun advocating on a state level for fairer education funding and who are committed to continuing over the next year and beyond. We need our elected officials to be partners in the fight to preserve the quality of our schools, and we hope you will join us and start by approving the 6%. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathleen.
Okay, Irene LaRoche is next. Irene, please go ahead.
Hello, my name is Irene LaRoche. I live in Sunderland, and I've been teaching at the middle school since 2003. Thank you for hearing me tonight, and thank you, uh, to the regional school committee for supporting our schools with the 6% increased budget proposal. As you consider the budget for the town, I'd like to share the impact of cuts the regional school commit, um, regional school district that we have already experienced in past few years. We have already been tightening our belts and struggling to support the students with less. In the last couple of budget cycles, the middle schools lost four core teaching positions. That would be math, science, English, language arts, and social studies. The direct result of these cuts was a 20% increase in class sizes. We have classes with 25, 26, and 27 students. The core subjects are an important part of foundation in the middle school, and we have a team that includes four core plus a special education teacher. These are the home base for middle schoolers. With the cuts, the core staff has had less time to build relationships with these students. This is happening as we're recovering from the impact of COVID and at a time when, for a variety of reasons, students need more, not less, connection with adults and teachers. As classes get too big, curriculum and assessment that is possible changes. A significant part of our workday for core teachers already occurs outside of the contracted hours, which we are paid for. Planning grading and communicating with families, almost all this occurs outside of school hours for me. Best practices in teaching cannot be sustained with the numbers we have in our classes. The core subject areas have some of our most veteran teachers, many who serve the school and the community beyond the classroom. But many of us have had to step back from some of these roles as our workload has increased with the increase of class sizes due to budget cuts. The state has increased the MCAS expectations. This year, we have the new civics MCAS. I am on the committee for that at the state level. All four core subjects are going to be delivering MCAS. Um, this is also accompanied with a civic action project that the eighth graders will be doing. You may remember the Indigenous Peoples' Day proposal that our eighth graders brought to the town some time ago. We love this work. Um, but as we have new mandates, the scrutiny of our program is going to be there from the state. We cannot do that without your support and the funds. Our smaller class sizes help keep students out of the IEP pipeline and support them in their needs. And again, we cannot do that without those small class sizes and your funding. I struggle to find space in my physical classroom to sit next to my students. I brought a stool so I could move around. I cannot always find a place to put it to be able to connect with them and meet their needs. And our recruiting and hiring has been impacted. This summer, a teacher in a local district went to a local district because of smaller class sizes. We've never had this happen in Amherst. We used to be the place everybody wanted to go to. Please fund our schools at the 6% increase. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Irene.
Next is Jen Johnson.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Jensen, and I live in Conway, and I have 20 years' experience as an Amherst educator. I'd like to begin by thanking the regional school committee for their hard work in protecting public education for our community. I encourage you to support the 6% budget voted by the regional school committee as well as already approved by the towns of Shoots, Shootsbury, Leverett, and Pelham. I appreciate that in these difficult times that the town officials remember our commitment to its residents, including our most precious, our children. Please fund a 6% budget to show your commitment to meeting our students' diverse needs. Thank you so much for your efforts.
Thank you, Jen.
Next is Seneca Smith.
Hi, my name is Seneca. I'm a resident of Wendell, Massachusetts, and I'm here to also support the 6% budget increase for um, regional schools in Amherst. Um, I am a student at Forever's, which is a local, um, school near Amherst, and we recently supported and approved, um, a budget increase for students, or sorry, for teachers. And, um, I know this played a very large role in teachers being encouraged to stay at the school next year. And I'm assuming you all know what the cost of living looked like these days. And teachers, of all people, need adequate budget increases to sustain themselves in these recent increases in cost of living. Um, to add on to this, education for everyone is crucial for our future because students are the future. And teachers leaving is not going to support anyone. And to add on to Irene, students' connections with teachers are crucial from a young age in students developing good connections with their, themselves and learning about themselves and their peers. So I really hope you consider and support the 6% budget increase.
Thank you, Seneca.
Next is Yael first.
Hello, uh, my name is Yael Thierst. I'm an Amherst resident, a speech pathologist at the middle school, high school, and summit, and I'm also a Wildwood parent. I want to speak in support of the 6% budget increase, uh, that the school committee is requesting. I want to remind everyone that we are not talking about expanding programming or even maintaining level services at this point. We are talking about minimizing cuts, meaning not cutting at least some of the positions that we know that we currently still need. We are already struggling in special education. We are already overworked. We are still doing our best to meet the needs of our students, but cutting more educated positions means that, again, we are asked to do more with less. This means, for example, larger caseloads and larger class sizes. My own kids are in fourth and first grades, and I'm concerned about what will be left of the wonderful programming at the regional schools by the time that they enter middle school as rural languages and dance are on the chopping block. Our regional partners approve the 6%, and I implore you to show that Amherst also values education and do the same. Thank you.
Thank you, Yael.
Okay, next is Arlie.
Hi, my name is Arlie Gould. I live in South Amherst. Um, I just want to, as the other person said, second a lot of what I'm hearing. Um, a couple of things. The person who said, um, you know, that the teachers that keep the kids out of the IEP pipeline. I am a former teacher. I worked in Springfield as a reading intervention teacher, and I know from experience what that means. It is so nice to be able to work with kids and get them up to speed without them having to go through the whole IEP process and be labeled sped and all these kinds of things. The other thing I'm hearing, um, is this shrinking, uh, class, you know, school age population. And I was very glad to hear, uh, a person involved in the schools talking about that because this morning at the library building committee meeting, I was making the same point that, you know, this huge expansion is being had of the library based on this, the children and the teens, they need all this space. Meanwhile, what I'm hearing is that the school age population is actually shrinking. And in fact, we're getting older, and it's the older population that's increasing. So these two facts about the town, they don't seem to go together very well. The last thing I'll say is the quality of the Amherst schools. I was a Springfield teacher. The Amherst schools were considered the top in the state. I was just talking to my neighbor, who is a school committee member, who said, "We're the middle of the pack now." You know, we've lost that status. So when that person was sharing about we need to get ourselves back up, it's not a competition, I realize, but you know, this school system really did have the best schools in the state, and we've dropped from that. So, anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Arlie.
Okay, next is Christian Healy.
Hello, my name is Christian Healy, and I'm a resident of District Two with one child at Ford River Elementary and another at the middle school. I would like Amherst to grant the regional schools a 6% budget increase with Matt, which matches what Pelham, Shootsbury, and Leverett have already approved. This echoes the points others have made in more detail, especially Kathleen Mitchell and Irene LaRoche. Um, so I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you, Christian.
The next speaker is just East Hampton Room One, the Prindle. So please, I make sure to identify yourself and say where you live before you begin your comment.
Yes, hi, my name is Michelle Prindle, and I'm a resident of South Amherst on Country Corners Road. I have three children in the school district. I have one rising ninth grader, a rising seventh grader, and a rising third grader. And one of my children is on the autism spectrum and receives special ed services. We've been very, very pleased with the services provided at Crocker Farm, and we're deeply concerned about the budget cuts that are going to impact the regional school districts, especially as they will impact special ed services and cause fewer teaching positions to be available to help special ed students. And this is an issue of diversity, equity, and inclusion also. And we talk about as a town how we value racial diversity and racial equity and inclusion. And yet, last week, we saw an extremely military-style police presence from our town at the University of Massachusetts to put down protesters, and we're talking about increasing our policing budget. Do we want to live in a police state, or do we want to live in an educated and civilized state? Do we want to provide the educational services that our students need to thrive? We also know that adolescents are dying by suicide at rates that are unfathomable. Part of this is coming out of the pandemic and the social isolation that results. And part of it is because we're cutting the teachers needed for social and emotional learning at a time when these children are going through severe changes in our society. And we know that this is the anxious generation. We know that there's social media. We know that there's so much that they have to grapple with. Taking away support personnel and teachers who are there for them is just unfathomable in Amherst, Massachusetts. It's shocking to me. And I see that North Hampton just entered into an agreement with Smith College, which has a smaller endowment, and I would urge Town Manager Brockelman to get into some serious conversations with Amherst College about how to allocate funds to our schools. $15,000 is completely insufficient for the regional school district. Divided up between the two schools, that's $7,500 per year. What can you do with that? Please take our education of our youth seriously here in Amherst, Massachusetts. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Andre Gadera.
Hello, uh, this is Andre Gadera, and I live in Amherst. Um, first of all, I'd like to, uh, thank you all for, uh, taking the time to explain to us, uh, what's going on and to give us an opportunity to, uh, to, uh, give our opinions about, uh, the budget. Um, the reason why I'm speaking today is because I'm here to support the increase in the, uh, uh, budget for the schools. And, um, so, uh, first of all, I just, let me just give a little background. I, I went to Amherst High School, uh, and graduated there at, in 1984. My two brothers, uh, went to Amherst High School. They went to Amherst, uh, the, to the ARPS as well. Um, and back then, uh, the schools were, I think you've heard it already, they were considered among the best in the, uh, in, in the state. Um, among the best in the country. I mean, they had, uh, all kinds of languages. There were people studying, uh, Russian, uh, of all things in the school. Um, that's not the way it is, uh, right now. It's, uh, you know, it, it, since, uh, since I've come, so, uh, since I've retired, I moved away and retired and came back specifically for the, uh, school system, now having two young uh, children of my own. Um, and this is the place that I chose to come to. My family came here. And once coming, once I got back, I, I've realized that it, it kind of seems like, uh, the, the school system is quite stressed. Um, and I would imagine that you can all agree with me on that. Um, what the school system needs is investment. It needs, it needs investment. It needs to be, uh, seen that it's supported. Um, this is what, uh, this is what we need you all to, uh, to make happen. I mean, this is what we, uh, voted you all for. So, uh, please, um, see to it that, uh, that you do, uh, increase the, uh, increase it to at least 6%. This is my request, and I, I'm just surprised that I'm actually asking to do that. Um, we need, and we need more special education, um, uh, assistance and, um, you know, uh, we need classes with enough stu, enough teachers, uh, and not enough, uh, and not too many students so that the, they, they have the best learning experiences. We've had incredible people come out of, uh, this, uh, school system. Um, so I'll leave it at that, and, uh, I appreciate your time. Have a good one.
Thank you, Andre.
Next is Amanda Lewis.
Hi there, um, my name is Amanda Lewis, and I'm an Amherst High School educator and Pelham resident. And I'm just echoing the support for folks already sharing about meeting the 6% budget increase for the regional schools. I want to thank school committee as well as Pelham, Shootsbury, and Leverett for their support so far. Uh, echoing what folks have shared, it's just so hard to imagine what these proposed budget cuts would look like. Um, you know, we're not talking about increasing our level funding. We're talking about triaging, and I think our community members and really particularly our students have shared time and time again in meetings over the spring about the value of these programs. You know, I'm thinking about the high school because that's where I am, but programs that are now so vulnerable in special education, our restorative justice program, Prep Academy, programs that really serve our students, um, with staff who our students love and feel seen and affirmed by, um. And I really continue to be moved by the power with which our students and community members are speaking and bringing creative solutions to the table. And I really encourage us to continue to put our money towards what we value, even when faced with hard choices, and meet the 6%. Thank you.
Thank you, Amanda. And I'm not seeing any other hands up right now requesting to speak. Um, well, having said that, a hand went up.
Yeah, Erin Hutchinson, please. Oops, I'm sorry. Hang on just a moment, please. There you go. Erin Hutchinson, please go ahead.
Yes, hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Um, my name is Erin Hutchinson. I'm a special education teacher at the Amherst High School. Um, I've taught there for four years, and much like everyone else on this call, I am echoing support for that 6% increase that Pelham, Shootsbury, and Leverett have already voted for. Um, I mean, like others have said, all of our students are negatively impacted budget, by budget cuts, but our most vulnerable students and the students I work with every day will suffer But our most vulnerable students and the students I work with every day will suffer the most. Um, like Amanda said, the six percent isn't even about expanding programming. It's to minimize the damage that's being done to our schools, right, by having budget cut year after year. By going forward with the four percent, we would lose guidance counselors, the restorative justice program, world languages, co-teaching, and all these tier-two supports and things that we need more of at this time, not less. So I would say thank you to the regional towns who have voted to increase with the six percent. And for the hard work of our school committee members, and I hope Amherst does the same and goes with the increase.
Thank you, Erin. We, we have two more people who have raised their hand.
Erin Baker. Please go ahead.
Hi, um, Karen Baker. I'm a teacher at Summit Academy. Uh, I've been with the district since two thousand eight. I wasn't planning on speaking. Um, thank you for hearing me. I'm gonna try to organize what I wanted to say. I had a few points. Um, I'm certainly speaking in favor of at least a six percent increase on the part of Amherst. A lot of people have spoken to the reasons for that, but unfortunately, one of the things that I keep thinking is that the town council is not hearing the full, uh, unless you were listening at the various school committee meetings, you're not getting the full message that the school committee received. People seem to have, you know, it's that time of year, I'm not sure what it is, we're not hearing as many people speak to the town council as spoke to the school committee. And the incredibly powerful outpouring of statements that people made. I, I would like you to maybe even go back and listen. I don't know if that part was recorded, but it's really important to hear the incredible myriad of ways that the cuts, the problems that the schools already face and the effects that the cuts would have if there were further cuts. The students who spoke about how meaningful the restorative justice program was to them. Um, the department leaders who were invited by the school committee to speak about their current circumstances and the effects of further cuts. I just want you to understand that what you're hearing in the meetings that I've attended of the, the town council is a fraction of the, the damage that people have communicated is likely to happen. The other main point I wanted to make is that, um, to the extent that I understand how the budget works, I, I understand that there's concern that perhaps raising the amount would not be sustainable. I also understand that there is a large amount of, um, rainy day funds, I forget what they're called, free cash that Amherst has access to, as well as money that, uh, could be shifted from other departments and so on. But the point I want to make is that every year that you can maintain as much as possible is that many more students who are supported while we search for solutions that are longer term. Uh, there have been various, uh, people with the Amherst Palom Education Association and with the parents who have been meeting with um, legislators, uh, talking about the funding formulas. Uh, we've been meeting as a group around MTA to try to, to figure out how to change the funding formulas. This is something that you could be involved into. There can be long-term solutions and please tide us over until we achieve those and help us achieve them.
Thank you, Karen.
Okay, next is Catherine Alkotabi.
Hello, hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Fabulous. Um, hi, I'm Catherine Alkotabi Stroke. I am a Wildwood teacher of five years at Amherst um, and a resident of Hatfield, Massachusetts. Um, I want to echo what has been said about accepting the six percent raise, um, which as has been said is absolutely not enough, but is crucial to be able to sustain, um, the amazing work that Amherst educators have been doing. Um, I also just wanted to share as a music educator, I know that specials were one of the things that was, um, being feared to be cut. And while I am so grateful that it was not cut because of, um, um, cuts that did not have to happen, um, it just makes me think of all of the cuts that would have to happen without this, um, increase and cuts that would have to happen in the future. So yeah, just wanted to strongly, um, give my recommendation of accepting the six percent raise, um, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Catherine.
Okay, Amy Calman. Please go ahead.
Hi, my name is Amy Calman, she/her, and I'm a resident of Amherst in District Three. I'm a speech-language pathologist in the Amherst Regional Schools. And I have children who have attended the schools, um, one student who's still at the high school. I am deeply concerned that we keep having to show up to meetings and represent this message, but thank you for hearing it. And I'm so inspired by the fact that the regional school committee had the courage to vote through, through an eight percent budget of level funding. I'm discouraged that we're looking at a six percent compromise, but it's vital that we really support the six percent compromise. I work with students who have communication challenges, who have special education learning needs. And I'm really gifted to be able to be in classrooms with, that are inclusion classrooms, right? With students who have a range of learning profiles. And some of the most powerful messaging that, um, I hope, again, to refer you back to some of the letters that have been written, some of the people who have come to regional school committee meetings and have spoken. Um, our minority, sorry, they're not going, but that multicultural student, um, achievement scholars spoke to the entire faculty at the high school, um, and spoke passionately about how the cuts impact some of the teachers who they are able to connect with and who represent them. The cuts disproportionately are cutting, um, are impacting people who represent and help our students feel comfortable and at home in school, helping them show up. And we know we have chronic attendance issues that are an issue nationally, but also in Amherst. If we cut the youngest, the most diverse in terms of gender-affirming identities, various, right, racial and ethnic identities, those are the, the teachers that are absolutely needed in our schools. We've been struggling for years since the pandemic closure to repair the community. And students feel the love and connection, the relationship that they have with educators who keep showing up and show, I did this, you can do this too. Please consider funding the six percent. And please reach out to us if you need more information about why the schools need these funds to support our students. It's an incredibly challenging task right now and we appreciate your support and your service. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy.
Next is Michael Cardozo.
Hi, this is Mike Cardozo. I'm a biology teacher at Amherst Regional High School. I'm also speaking in support of the six percent increase and want to thank, uh, the school committee for, the regional school committee for their support of our schools and the other neighboring towns in the regional district. Um, a lot of people have spoken about all the, the likely devastating consequences of the budget cut. And I agree with everything that has been said about that. So in the interest of, um, saying something from a slightly different perspective, I just want to mention that if you are financially minded and thinking of these things more in, in the terms of how you're going to make the numbers work, uh, investing in the schools is an investment in the, the revenue to the town. Um, this town has always had a reputation to attract people, including my own family when I originally moved to the district because of the quality of the schools. And with that comes revenue for the town when you attract, um, families, professionals, and people who will contribute to the economy of the town. I think that just from a financial perspective, it is worth the investment, even if the structure of the yearly budget cycle makes us tend to think short-term. If it is possible to think longer term, I believe there will be a payoff to avoid the detrimental effects of this. In the cut that we might be going through to get through this immediate year, we will, it will pay off financially in addition to all the moral, ethical, and, uh, all the human reasons that we've already been discussing about our students. So I just wanted to add that perspective and I thank you for your consideration, uh, of this.
Thank you, Michael.
Uh, next is Ellen J. G. Please go ahead.
Hi, um, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. I'm Ellen Jedrick Gadera. I'm a resident of Amherst and I have two children, uh, one in elementary school at Crocker Farm and a preschooler. Um, also a member of the Special Education Parent Advisory Council for the school district. Um, as many others have urged, uh, I'm asking you to please approve the six percent increase, um, that will preserve critically important funding for, um, our important programs like world languages, restorative justice, and especially special education in, uh, the middle and high school. Excuse me, I'd like to thank the regional school committee as others have for voting, um, the budget that they did. The reason that our family moved to Amherst in the first place was for education. We, we knew Amherst had a, a reputation for putting education first and had a very good reputation for special education as well. That is why we came here. That's why we bought a house here. And to see the cuts coming again and again, it's going to drive families away. And it will, will probably drive our family away if we consi-, if we continue to see what's happening. This is why we're here. This is what we believe Amherst was really all about. And I urge you to approve the six percent increase and it's not enough, but, um, at least, you know, keep it, keep it to a limit while we try to work on other solutions. And thank you all for your time.
Thank you, Ellen.
Okay, next is Rachel Hall. Please go ahead, Rachel.
Hi, folks, I'm just calling in to thank you so much for all your work and to plead that you give the six percent increase to support what everyone else on this meeting has already said. I think we desperately need this. And thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Ra-, Rachel. And right now, I'm not seeing any other hands. And I actually want to, I want to really thank everyone for both eloquent statements but staying within three minutes, um, making them very succinct and, and bringing in a wide range of, um, information to us. This is why we hold these listening sessions and it's, uh, believe me, we are listening to you. As we, uh, have our next few, uh, pieces. So I think it, it, Athena, it looks like one more hand went up when I announced that. I didn't see any more hands, so.
Okay, Megan McCarragh.
Yes, hi, um, yeah, sorry, I was a little late to the meeting. Um, I just want to echo the same thing. Please approve the six percent at least. Um, and same thing as, as one of the previous callers, we actually just moved here last summer, three kids. Moved here specifically, again, for the education. There's a, there's so many great things happening in the schools. Um, we need to keep those things and improve on them. Improve especially on the middle school, but, um, keeping the, like, the music program has been so important. Yes, knowing that people have the special education services that they need. Um, all those teachers, retaining great teachers, so many things that are so important. And I really, really hope, um, that they will continue and that we can improve the schools and, um, everyone can benefit from them. Uh, so thank you. Thank you for your work and for your time.
Thank you, Megan.
Okay, it looks like we have one more. Meg Graham McLean.
Hi, yes, I'm Meg Graham McLean. Um, I have two kids, uh, at Fort River. Um, and they're part of the Comanates program. And we also moved here a few years ago before they started school for that same purpose, that, that, um, we wanted to be in a place where we really focused on public education. Um, and so I also would love to urge you to approve the six percent. Um, and I really, really appreciate all that you've been doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Megan. Well, I'll leave the public comment period open a little bit longer, but right now there are no hands up. Just for those who can't see, we've got about thirty-six people in the audience, but a large number of them have spoken. A majority have, actually. So Lynn, I'm not sure, or, or Athena, how long we should wait. I mean, we've scheduled the meeting to have adequate time and I'm not seeing any other hands.
We typically wrap up when, when there are no further comments. So it's up to you if you'd like to wait for a few more minutes or if you'd like to, um, seek a motion to adjourn.
Okay, I'm not seeing other, any other hands, so I really don't want to cut anyone off, but I, I think, um, we, we have two motions to adjourn. One would be the finance committee meeting. Uh, no, wait a minute, a, a hand went up.
Um, I think this person has already spoken.
Okay.
We, we don't usually do two opportunities.
Yeah, no, it, it, that is a person who already spoke. Thank you. I do, again, want to thank everyone who spoke. Um, and I see Mandy's hand is up. So I, um, Mandy. Or Council, Council Hanukkah.
I was just gonna say, if, if there are no other hands, um, of people who have not spoken before, that I will make the motion to adjourn. Do we normally do the council first?
It doesn't matter.
Then I'll, I'll make the motion to adjourn the council.
Uh, I second it. And I will now quickly take the role, uh, for the counselors that are here. And that would be, um, Jennifer Tob.
Yes.
Alicia Walker.
Yes.
Anna Devlin-Gothier.
Hi.
And Pam Rooney.
Yes.
The council is adjourned.
Uh, the rest of us counselors get to vote too.
Yeah, right. Go ahead. I mean, we can, we can do it with one motion.
But, but you didn't call on three of us.
You didn't call on us, it's for the council adjournment.
Kathy Shane.
Yes.
Mandy Jo Hanukkah.
Aye.
Andy Steinberg.
Yes.
Bernie Kubiak.
Yes.
Matt Holloway.
I support that.
Both the council.
I guess my motion was to adjourn both then, Athena.
Yes.
Thank, thank you.
The council and the finance committee are adjourned. Thank you so much. Kathy, nice job. And everyone in the audience, thank you very much for coming and speaking with us. We definitely appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Good night.